Meeting called to order. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, school committee minutes. We don't have any, since this is our first meeting back. We don't have any presentations as well. Public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the school committee, please feel free to come to the podium. Seeing that isn't anybody, it's closed. And I will turn it over to Dr. Burke for the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of things on the report of the superintendent, as this is the August meeting, which is always a skeleton meeting, so to speak, of the school year. September 5th, we are actually back to our normal monthly meetings with the longer agendas and the indicators of success and other things that will be coming forward. But the items I have on my report tonight include the following. First and foremost, we are very pleased that the state provided us with a supplemental budget. This really was the result of advocacy by many of you, if not all of you. It's the result of many voices advocating to the state legislators that the fiscal '20 budget was not sufficient. We received approximately $1.3 million, which you will be voting on tonight, the spending plan. The spending plan is a framework of putbacks. It's really from the cuts over the last couple of years, what are we prioritizing and putting back? And some of them, you know, because we actually stated to the community that these were the items that we would be putting back, such as a Clark Avenue School Special Education teacher, et cetera. At the same time, I don't want us getting confused, the advocacy needs to continue. This is $1.3 million. It is a down payment, but it's a drop towards the down payment of fixing the foundation formula. Advocacy needs to continue. The foundation formula has not been completely fixed. So, for example, if, well, not if, we are approximately $17 million underfunded in special education and benefits. 1.3 is just a mere drop towards that $17 million of underfunding. The state legislators are on break right now, but they are working on a bill that, in discussion, to fix the foundation formula, to bring it up to where we feel it should be. I think that it would behoove all of us to continue the pressure on our state legislators to make sure that we're having those conversations, because I do believe the fall and the early winter, we are going to receive a bill, and we want to make sure that that bill and that foundation fix is something we can live with for the next 25 years, because it takes about 25 years before you're going to end up fixing the formula again. So, we need to definitely keep our advocacy moving forward. I see City Council Leo Robinson here. We need the city council to continue to advocate alongside us, as well as all of our stakeholders, teachers, parents, you know, school committee. Also, in addition, and I know this gets confusing, but I want you to think of it as three buckets, right? So you have the supplemental budget that you're voting on tonight, and then you have the greater, the big picture, the foundation formula fix. But in the meantime, there is a pothole that we are still waiting for. The pothole has been given to us the last couple of years to account for the undercounting of our economically disadvantage. It goes to a small subset of districts, somewhere between seven and 10 districts, who have been disproportionately impacted by the count of our low-income students when we went to the new methodology in 2016. Last year, we received about $296,000. I've heard that we'll probably get something in the same range. Last year, when we came to you with the supplemental budget, we had supplemental and pothole together. We can't wait anymore. We need to move our schools forward. We're opening next week, so we had to move the supplemental budget forward now and not wait for the pothole. We do anticipate we will be coming back to you in the same process once we do receive pothole. So, any questions on that before I move to my second report? I know it gets confusing, but, three buckets, right? All right. My second piece is, transition is well underway with Superintendent Almi Almeida. We both began this week, and so we are working together seamlessly. We are, you know, going to meetings together, introducing her, explaining why we do things, what the processes are, what the rules, regulations, policies, et cetera. It's a lot, you know, to absorb in one timeframe, so again, I say thank you to the wisdom of the school committee in approving this transition plan. From this point till December 1st, Almi is shadowing, observing, and we're constantly debriefing together. As of December 1st, I take a step back, and I am a critical friend in the background as she is making the decisions. As of December 31st, will be my last official day, and January 1st is her first day as superintendent. But we have been complimented throughout the state that, for Chelsea having the foresight to really intentionally and purposely structure a succession plan and a transition plan that will mitigate and minimize any type of transition dip or backward steps. We have, you know, we have colleagues who have been saying, "You've got to write a paper on this. You've got to write a paper on this." So, after it all, Almi and I are going to write a paper together, too. My third, oh, we also had Back to School today. That was a great success, for those of you that showed up. Absolutely, it was a wonderful event. It always is a wonderful event. And kudos to our parent liaisons, all four, from the four different grade ranges. Honestly, they do it all. We're totally hands-off. We show up, and we enjoy, and we have fun, and so we really, it's amazing what they pull together every single year. We've also had two administrative summits. The two summits this week were Tuesday and Thursday, and the administrative summits are basically all-day professional development, all-day training, as we begin to ramp up and open our doors. And so that is an annual occurrence that takes place. And my third big thing that I'd like to share with you tonight is some wonderful, wonderful news about our buses. And so I'm going to ask Executive Director of Administration and Finance Monica Lamboy to come forward. You know, you get the calls from our constituents when their child doesn't get on a bus, and you know every year we have a waiting list, and you know we try so very hard to make sure that we get as many students on the bus as possible. But we usually have a waiting list of about, I would say, 75 to 100 on a given year. Some years, it's been even more. So, I just think we need to advertise and brag about what Monica and her team have been able to pull off this year for us. Monica?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm the Director of Administration and Finance. As the superintendent mentioned, trying to get as many students as possible on the bus is a challenge every year. This time last year, if you recall, you gave us the funding to add back a bus, the eighth bus. So, this time last year, we were scrambling in the background, trying to figure out how to maximize the seats on that eighth bus that you had funded, and we were able to fill it, but we still had a large number of students who, throughout the year, were not able to get a seat on the bus to the elementary school, to the Mary C. Burke complex. It's impactful to the parents, it's impactful to the guardians, it's impactful to the students as well. So, what we did this year is, we took a look at the data, and we started from scratch. We have created a series of new routes, eight total, and none of the stops have changed, although some of the bus numbers have changed, but we are at this point where we have zero students on the waitlist. We have been able to get every child going to the Mary C. Burke that was eligible for transportation and has provided documentation of their address, a seat on the bus. Letters are going out to the families. All of those children will get a little laminated tag to attach to their backpack that will say their name, first name, their bus route, and the bus stop, so they will know where to go. We do have approximately 100 families that have not yet given us the documentation for the address match, so we are encouraging them all to really come in as quickly as possible to the Parent Information Center to provide us with that documentation. We do still have some seats left in some of the routes, not all of the routes at this point, so we are going to try to get those kids in as quickly as we possibly can, but we do need that documentation from the parents. But very happy there's no waitlist as of today.
Thank you so much.
That is great. You. (applause).
Dr. Burke, did you have the new teachers' trolley ride?
Yes, we did. Mrs. Bro, would you like to speak of the new teacher orientation and the trolley ride this week?
I didn't take the trolley ride. I did take it the first year, but the only thing this year was a little hot. But we had filled, like, 35 seats. The trolley guide, Lisa Santagate, I don't know if any of you know her, she knows everything about Chelsea's history, and she does a tremendous job of showing that to all the new teachers. They go into our neighborhoods, they see where our kids live. She told me that it was a little challenging with all the construction, but she got into most of the places that she wanted to go, so I hope we can keep that going.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, that concludes the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Moving on now, unfinished business, we have none, so now we move on to new business. Consideration and action to approve additional Chapter 70 appropriation to the 2019-2020 budget in the amount of $1,303,790. Each year, the governor's proposed budget numbers are used by Chelsea Public Schools as the foundation for upcoming year's budget. However, when the budget is finally adopted, after having been deliberated by the House and State and considered by the governor, the budget allocations by school district typically change. In the case of the FY '20 budget, Chelsea Public Schools will be receiving an additional This figure is separate and apart from any changes to the pothole, funding which may be finalized by the state in the next few weeks. The superintendent recommends that these funds be appropriated as follow. So, we had a subcommittee this week, and we talked it over, but before I go on and we do a roll call, does any other member have any questions on this? No? Okay. So, for district administration, $17,000. Special education and pupil personnel services, $146,000. Benefits payroll adjust insurance, $437,627. Facilities management and transportation, $257,000. The ELC, $174,775. Berkowitz School, $15,000. Hooks Elementary, $10,000. Kelly Elementary, $10,000. Sakolowski Elementary, $10,000. Brown Middle School, $98,744. Clark Ave., $74,644. Wright Science and Technology Academy, $10,000. Chelsea High, $37,500. Chelsea Opportunity Academy, $5,000. For a total of $1,303,890. Municipal finance law requires that the school committee appropriates funds as a prequisite to expending such funds. This appropriation also requires approval from the Chelsea City Council. Roll call?
On the motion to approve additional Chapter 70 appropriations to the 2019-2020 budget in the amount of $1,303,790. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Pardon me, I, forgive me, interrupt the roll call. Is it possible to ask a question? Forgive me, because you were saying you offered that. Are you speaking? Is it too late? Forgive me, just very quick questions, or we can do it after, and that's fine.
Okay, we could discuss it after.
After, okay. Forgive me, Terry, can you repeat the question?
The vote to accept the $1,303?
Yes.
On the motion to approve additional Chapter 70 appropriations to the 2019-2020 budget in the amount of $1,000, sorry, $1,303,790.
It's $890.
$890. So it's $1,303,890.
Yes. Roll call?
Do you want me to start from the beginning?
No, where you left off is fine.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Okay. Next, consideration and action to accept a gift from the Hildreth Stewart Charitable Foundation Trust in the amount of $3,000 to purchase T-shirts for the all-staff convocation on August 26, 2019. In accordance with our practice, a convocation is held for all staff members on the day before students arrive for their first day of school. Last year, T-shirts were purchased and worn by all staff members at this event to encourage employee engagement and a sense of community. This year, we intend to purchase T-shirts again for this event, and Robert Hildreth, through his charitable trust, has generously donated $3,000 towards the cost of the T-shirts. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Motion to accept a gift from the Hildreth Stewart Charitable Foundation Trust in the amount of $3,000 to purchase T-shirts for the all-staff convocation on August 26, 2019. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Next, consideration and action to accept a gift from Dr. Mary Burke in the amount of $700 received from a presentation at a DESE conference in March 2019 to the Performing Arts Department at Chelsea High School. Explanation, Dr. Burke received a $700 honorary and first presenting at a DESE conference in March 2019, which she is gifting to the Chelsea High School Performing Arts Department. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept a gift from Dr. Mary Burke in the amount of $700 received from a presentation at a DESE conference in March to the Performing Arts Department at the Chelsea High School. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Eight in the affirmative, one absent, motion passes. Next, under communication, we have a request for waiver of rental fee from the Chelsea Rotary Club. Do we have a motion to accept this and commend it to the record? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have announcements. I just want to say, we have a few important dates coming up. So Monday, August 26th, is Convocation Breakfast at the Chelsea High School at 8:00 a.m. For any of the school committee members that would be able to come, we would love to have you there. August 27th, Wednesday, August 27th, first day of school for grades K through 12. Monday, September 2nd, Labor Day, no school. Tuesday, September 3rd, the Clark Avenue Potluck Dinner at 5:30 p.m. Thursday, 9:05, school committee meeting at 7:00 o'clock, right here in the city hall chambers. And on September 14th, Saturday, we have our school committee retreat held at the Clark Avenue at 8:00 a.m. Right, 8 to 12?
Yeah, 8 to 12.
8 to 12, we have that. Before, I know Marisol, you had a question on the budget? Okay, Monica, do you want to come up to the podium?
So, I wanted to thank Dr. Burke and all the staff for your work going into the supplemental piece that you brought before us today. I know that, as a parent, I'm really excited to hear that, you know, our schools are counting on additional support and funding, especially in restoring a lot of the cuts that were made previously. I had two small questions, hopefully just for our own educational purposes. One, when do you become aware that this money was going to be approved or sent to the city? And secondly, in terms of the list of appropriations, like, what, if you could give us, like, nothing pretty in depth, but, there's a couple of minutes to help us understand, like, your process in determining how those funds get used.
Sure, I'll defer to the superintendent on the exact date, but the state did take a few weeks after July 1st to adopt the budget.
It was actually into August 1st.
Yeah.
So, it was a good, solid timeline, I believe. At the same time, too, what we, in the past, we have always reserved an August school committee date for any type of budget that would have to have a supplemental vote. So you always have an August date. In prior years, not last year, but in years prior to this, when the governor actually, you know, they were able to agree on a budget in a timely fashion, we haven't had to use the August school committee, and we can actually cancel it and not start back until September. But the last couple of years, because of the delays that have taken place, we've had to have this meeting in order to move the money forward, because the money now, with your vote tonight, we now go to the city manager, we send a letter tomorrow morning stating that the school committee approved this. The city manager then has to move it forward to the city council, and they have to go through two readings. So technically, on the calendar, we're probably still a month away from really having the access to that money.
Thank you for that.
In terms of process? Every year, I think every budget that is adopted, there's always a list of things that one would have liked to have added, that there were not enough resources to do, and certainly in this case, in a year where we had to cut, that was certainly the case. So we had a list going in of things that were resources to become available, we wanted to consider. Further, since the budget adoption, we have more information about enrollment, particularly our pre-K enrollment in our social communication autism program. We also had more information about the spending in the '19 budget. So I think the wish list that we had always had, coupled with the increased knowledge about the numbers of students coming into particular areas, and just where we found, you know, later in the process where there were some deficits in the '19 budget, I think all of that together kind of created this mix, this package before you.
So, in terms of community input, community has input in the budget, and then when we have to make the cuts, we listen to the community. Sometimes we put some things back, but we take money from other places. But then, at the vote, there are many, there are usually at least two meetings where I will verbally say, "If we get more money, this has to be a priority." I think you heard me say that, if we get more money, the special education teacher being put back at the Clark Avenue, as well as the Brown Middle School special education teacher, were going to be, like, first in the priority. The other things that I also mentioned was the fact that when the community stakeholders wanted us to put back the French teachers at Chelsea High School, we actually took money from facilities and salaries, the salary payroll adjustment, in order to find the money to put back those two salaries. And so, when we got to the end of the vote, and I did say that that's another area, facilities and, you know, the salary adjustment line needs to have money in there, because it's the best practice for both of them, but in particular, the facilities, we're now well over 20 years in age, and we're running into many, many things that we have to address. So, and we are the shepherds of that, of all of the buildings. The city council gives it to us to maintain.
Monica, I want to ask you a question about buses. So, I know in the past, we always had a waiting list, so I hear you say tonight, there is no waiting list. Is that because there's a lack of interest in getting transported to the schools? Are the numbers down, busing?
Thank you, that's a good question. The numbers are not down. What we realized in looking at it was there were particular areas where there were large numbers of students that didn't have seats. So the Prattville area particularly, so we are sending two buses into Prattville now. That was not the case last year. So those are able to pick up, there were a good number of students that are now going to be on the bus in that neighborhood. So by kind of moving various pieces around, we were able to basically more efficiently use every seat that we have, so that we were able to get all the kids that had asked for rides on the bus.
So then the question is, again, there is no waiting list to get onto the bus, because the parents went ahead and filled out their forms to get onto the bus. Am I right with that?
As of today, there are a number that are completely full, so should somebody come in tomorrow and ask for a seat on that bus, we will have a waitlist. So that's why I said, as of today, or at this moment, there is no waitlist. There are a number that are completely full, that we don't have space on. There's a small handful that do have a couple of seats left, so if people come for those buses, we will be able to accommodate them.
And I know we have the stats here about how many we transport, but what is the number of all the kids that we transport? Would you know that, Monica, offhand?
So, there are eight buses, and they each have approximately 75 seats, and not every seat is full, so is there any on a calculator? Forty, two, three, one?
Sorry, everybody got their calculator?
Yeah. So, 1,200. We have approximately 1,200 seats on our buses. I would say we're filled to 1,100 and something right now.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Ms. Garcia?
I'd like, I'm just going to wait for them.
Sorry, is this a question, or is just a final comment? So, is Ms. Lamboy free to go from the podium? Okay, thank you.
Out.
I like free to go.
Yeah. Free her up.
Okay, Ms. Garcia.
Okay, ready. Hi, everyone. I'd like to start off by thanking the parent liaisons for planning such a fun, vibrant event. Second, I'd like to wish a happy school year to the kiddos starting school on Monday, or today. When was the first day of school?
The first day for students is Wednesday.
Wednesday, so I wish the kiddos and all the students across the district a wonderful first day of school. On a less of a lighter note, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the victims, both the animals and the indigenous people in Brazil with the fire, and so if we can stand and dedicate one minute of silence to them.
Let's all stand.
We're doing a moment of silence.
We do it all at once? With someone else?
Or we could do a separate, we do a joke?
Separately?
All right. Next, Ms. Carlisle, you would like to hold a moment of silence for?
I would like us all to stand and have a moment of silence for a very special person who passed away last week, Robert Bradley, and he's our friends, we called him Dookie. Dookie was a very special person. He knew everybody in the city of Chelsea by first name. He ran the Chelsea Community Cable in a professional, outstanding way. He was very fair to everybody in the city of Chelsea and to his wife, Dot, and his beautiful children. I would like to have a moment of silence for Dookie.
Let's all stand. Let's all stand. Ms. Carlisle, you wanted to add something?
Um, I just want the teachers who live in the city of Chelsea and the students to know that we are doing a lot of construction throughout the city, and it might take you a little longer to get to school, so, uh, I think you're going to have to get up a little bit early and get to school on time, uh, especially around the high school area, uh, the traffic is backed up all over the place, and parking is going to be very limited. So I just want people to know that, um, you have to get up a little early to be in school for ti- on time. And I think, I would like to, every time someone donates some money, is there any way we can send a thank you note from the Chelsea School Committee? Like Bob just donated, Bob Hildreth, he just donated more money to, um, help us out. Um, I would like a letter of thank you to go out to anybody that donates money and from the Chelsea School Committee members?
Usually, it's a, a thank you letter from me, but certainly we can make it from the school committee. Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good idea that we thank these people for all the money they give towards Chelsea Public Education. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Santiago, and then Mr. DePado?
Um, so I had the complete, uh, exciting opportunity this morning to take part of the emergency, uh, preparedness training that occurred at the ELC, um, with some of the administration of the school. The invitation was extended to the school committee, and so I'm really grateful to all of you for your work. Um, Dr. Burke shared that it's the fifth year, um, and it's clear that there's so much commitment and so much care into that process. It's so multi-tiered, as you can imagine, um, from all the different types of reasons that we would need to keep our children safe. Um, so I really want to just thank you all for your work in making that happen, and also for extending that invitation. Um, yeah, I think as a parent, uh, it's important to understand for my own, it's the first time I've ever experienced it, um, so important to understand what that's like, uh, not just for the schools, but also thinking about for us that have students, children, and as parents, so just really wanted to thank you. Um, and the second announcement I had is, uh, Kelly, thank you for lifting a moment of silence, uh, for our indigenous people. It's deeply touching and moving. Um, I actually was wondering if this would be okay, but I think it is. Um, you know, it goes without saying that, you know, given what we're witnessing across the globe, there's things that we could do locally here in our own backyards and our own neighborhoods to raise awareness about, you know, environmental justice, climate change. Um, and it's part of the reason why I deeply care about, you know, emergency preparedness, and also, like, thinking about how we prepare for the future for our kids. Um, this Saturday, there is going to be a mobilization at Boston City Hall for anybody that wants to attend, um, in support for what's happening in Brazil, and it will be at the Boston City Hall Plaza, um, right there in Government Center, for anybody that's interested in attending.
Thank you. Mr. DePado?
Last week was not a good week in Chelsea. We lost Robert Duke Bradley. We lost William Ghul, well-known family in Chelsea. And then we lost Lynn Carbone, a nineteen-two graduate of Chelsea High School. People that were very, very active, they loved the city of Chelsea, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for those three individuals when the meeting is closed.
We could do it now. The talk, right? Please. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm not going to echo, I agree with what my colleagues have said here tonight, um, but I do want to give a shout-out to the CBOs, because we had no canopies, and we were under that sun at the back-to-school celebration. But we were there because we cared for the community, we came together, and we brought supplies for our students. I want to wish our students a great school year. I hope you did your summer readings and your math packets. Do they still get their math, right? So you get back, you're going to get tested, so I hope you did your homework during the summer. Um, and we'll be back here in, what, in two weeks? For another meeting? Okay? So, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion, second? Any objections? No? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.